I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the state of New Mexico, the city symbol of perfect friendship among united cultures.
Now turn and come over to Brian Stevens with the indication.
Dear Lord, thank you for the blessings you continue to provide for Eddie County every day. Please give us all this, but do good work in your name. I'd like to see a little bit more rain come our way regarding this, something that we've got on air. Pray that everybody looking for jobs finds it. Pray for some relief for all these businesses that have been struggling for the past year or so. Ask for all these things to be used.
Thank you, Brian. You know, rain is, uh, rain is like ice cream. You have to have a second dose to do any good, right? So we're doing okay, but we could use, we could use some more, so.
All right. Good morning, commissioners. Good morning to those in attendance to the commission meeting this morning. We'll begin with timed agenda. Are there any public comments or announcements? I did not receive any written comments prior to the meeting, and I don't see any in the audience this morning, Mr. Chairman. With no public comments, we'll move to the trailing agenda. Item one is approve the commission meeting minutes from April 20, 2021.
Does anybody have any questions, comments about the commission meeting minutes? Entertained a motion. We approve the commission meeting minutes for April 20th, 2021. Make that motion. Motion is second. Please call for the vote.
Cordova?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
McCutcheon?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Thank you, commissioners. The next item is to approve the purchase card approval report for March 2021.
Questions or comments on, uh, purchase cards? I mean, none. We will entertain a motion to approve the P-card approval report for March 2021. Motion is second. Please call for the vote.
Cordova?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
McCutcheon?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is, um, the sheriff's department has, um, been contracted to, contracted to, been provided a grant to patrol US 82 during construction, and we're looking to approve it. Sheriff Griffith is here if there are any questions. We got an upgrade, Sheriff Griffith over. Just saying. Sheriff Cage is listening. We got an upgrade. He's not listening. He is not listening. He's listening to... Never mind.
Okay. Any comments or questions on the US 82 overtime patrols? I may have, I may have one. Maybe this is dumb, but we're getting reimbursed for this. This is a grant we got from the state.
No, this is provided by the contractor.
Fisher.
Fisher. Construction.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay, this is the, the one on the north side.
Okay.
This is on 82 on the heading from Artesia.
Going out. But this is not directly related to the construction then?
Well, they, they'll be doing the structure out front of it.
Okay.
But then we also have one with Fisher on 285 on the south that they're doing the same thing.
Okay.
Although, my, my apologies, I, I-
We're, we're negotiating with, I would say, all this with the needs on.
Okay. Okay, good deal.
All right. I just want to make sure. So this is with the refinery. You're not going out on 82 towards Love, it's just-
We're either having traffic being out of-
Oh, I totally misunderstood. Okay.
Good deal. I, I, yeah. It, that, that, I thought it was specifically tied to the 82 project only, and I was like, man, that thing's way over, way over time, so I didn't know if the railties or anything that were happening down there. Just didn't know, didn't know what was going on there, so. Just-
Make a motion that we approve the overtime.
Second.
Make a motion, second. Please call for the vote.
Cordova? Henry?
Yes.
McCutcheon?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you, commissioners. Um, we next have a couple of, um, grant donations from ConocoPhillips, um, good community partner. We have a call upcoming with, uh, some of their senior people here, uh, this month, so. But this first one is for the sheriff's office for equipment. I believe it's $50,000.
Yes.
So, we'd like to, your approval to accept that grant for the sheriff's department.
Well, any questions or comments on that?
But, $50,000.
The only thing I would like to request is, Jerry, we need to, sure, as always, blast this out to everybody, and we really appreciate ConocoPhillips. But with that, I'll entertain a motion that we accept the grant for $50,000.
No, no.
ConocoPhillips. Motion is second. Please call for the vote.
Cordova?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
McCutcheon?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
And the next item is very similar. It's for the, uh, fire services. It's $10,000 from ConocoPhillips grant for equipment services.
Okay. Anything we need to know, Josh?
I'll start. We're just using it for items on the trading grounds.
Any questions or comments on that? And we appreciate ConocoPhillips. Entertained a motion that we accept the grant for ConocoPhillips, uh, from ConocoPhillips for the fire service. Motion is second. Please call for the vote.
Cordova?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
McCutcheon?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Next item is, uh, applications from the Fire Excise Fund, purchase portable x-ray system for the fire investigation group. Director Josh Mack.
So the portable, um, both of these fire excise applications will be for budget year, for next year. The first one is the portable x-ray machine. We had to actually have the ATF send somebody in from Puerto Rico for us last year to x-ray four items that we needed examined, so we identified the need. There's nothing really in this area on this side of Texas as well, so we could be called to assist other agencies. I think it'll be a great asset to the team to enhance our capabilities.
Okay. One other thing I might add, um, the Eddie County, um, fire investigation team. You saw some statistics a couple of months ago that showed the, the number of investigations and the number of closures. The team does an excellent, excellent job, uh, and so we, we have a very good group of trained and qualified folks. This is additional equipment that will help them continue their excellent work in this, in this area, so.
Okay. Entertain a motion that we approve the Fire Excise Fund application to purchase portable x-ray system for fire investigations. Motion is second. Please call for the vote.
Cordova?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
McCutcheon?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Thank you, commissioners. Um, with that application, there are, I have three copies that require each commissioner's signature, so I'll pass those around. And then their flag kind of went, so if you decide on them, pass them back, and we'll do the same on this next one. Uh, this next one is another fire excise fund application, um, for a heavy rescue unit for the Otoka VFD district. Mr. Mack.
Again, this application is for next fiscal year's budget. We're going to be replacing a 26-year-old rescue that Otoka currently has that used to be in Happy Valley. It was moved up to Otoka. We've basically expended its life, so the plan is, is to replace it with this heavy rescue in Otoka, which will also help cover the rest of the northern districts on major accidents, technical rescues, dives. It's kind of a multi-use vehicle that we're going to put as much equipment on as possible.
Do you have any questions for the Fire Excise Fund application purchase, uh, Rosenbauer Heavy Rescue Unit? More questions? Okay. I have no questions. I will entertain a motion that we approve, um, the Fire Excise Fund application to purchase Rosenbauer Heavy Equipment Rescue Unit to be used by Toka Fire Department. Motion is second. Please call for the vote.
If I could just a second?
Yeah.
Okay.
Or Carlson.
Okay. Cordova?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
McCutcheon?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, commissioners.
Same. Uh, here, there are three copies that require all three, uh, all the commissioner's signature. Thank you. All right. Um, we have, uh, next is a reclassification of the election administrator to deputy clerk in the clerk's office. Sterling is here if there are any questions, but this, uh, reclassification will not fill the position currently, but will keep it for, as things progress.
So this is Kara's position. This is Kara Cook. She's my chief deputy, and she's worked in elections for 14 years. Very qualified for the position, and I'm thrilled that she accepted. So, but I don't have anybody in that department that's ready to step into the position she's leaving. So I need, according to Roxanne, to move that back to a deputy clerk position instead of the election. So it's going to segment, obviously.
Any questions or comments on the position there? Like welcome Kara. Appreciate, appreciate you.
Keep asking, please. That's why you put her over here.
I guess we will entertain a motion that we approve the reclassification election administrator to deputy clerk. Motion is second. Please call for the vote.
Cordova?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
McCutcheon?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Thank you, commissioners, and again, welcome to Ms. Kara. Um, next item, we have, uh, some prior fiscal year invoices from the city of Carlsbad that we didn't get paid in 18 and 19. We just need to get it paid, um, for the hazardous waste collection. That's coming up again here soon. So I guess they're just making sure things are clear on their, on their book, so this is a-
So that wasn't Jason's household?
I can't speak to that. I don't think so, but I don't have definitive data on it. No, this was, this was for, uh, where we kept the roll-offs down at the beach and hauled things out, so.
So, any questions, comments to this or anything? Any more questions for Jason about his hazardous waste? Okay. All right. Uh, entertain a motion that we approve the prior fiscal year invoices for the city of Carlsbad for the hazardous waste collections. Motion is second. Please call for the vote.
Cordova?
Yes.
McCutcheon?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Thank you, commissioners. Thanks, Jason. Number nine is, uh, next on the agenda is discussion, the recommendation from the, uh, lodgers tax committee about setting up public meeting dates for, um, the lodgers tax ordinance draft.
Good morning, commissioners. I'm a little jealous of everybody else not having to come up here for this. We worked through the assignment we were given to work with the Planning Advisory Committee to revamp, re, rework, uh, and amend the lodgers tax ordinance. We've done so with the Planning and Development Committee. They made a motion at the last meeting to move this forward to you all with no, I want to stress this for Mr., uh, Lane Norton's benefit, with no recommendation to you all on the ordinance itself, but only to move it to you all. I promised them I would make that, that statement to you all. Uh, we, we did finish what we think is an ordinance ready to move forward to you all. We would like to set a couple of public meetings, looking at possibly, uh, a morning and afternoon meeting here and a morning and afternoon meeting in Artesia both to gain any additional public comment on that. Once we gather that information, if there's anything that needs to have significant, significant changes made to the ordinance, we will move that back to the B and D committee before it comes back to you all. Uh, if there are no significant, significant changes, then we will bring that back to you all for, uh, possible setting of a date for a public hearing and approval.
Um, hearings, Ken, we have it late enough in the afternoon, so the people are off work.
I, I was, what I was thinking is we would hold a meeting here in, in the morning, 8:30, 9 o'clock, hour, hour and a half meeting, then turn around and hold one in the afternoon, 5 to 6, 6 to 7, somewhere in that area, whatever you all decide. Do that one day, then maybe, I was thinking, my thought was, follow up this next day with the exact same schedule in Artesia.
Just to point out, the existing ordinance for lodgers tax, the county has had in place. It was, you know, for, um, those receipts were used for advertisement and, and, um, related to tourism and whatnot. The change here is, um, to incorporate the opportunity that state legislators put in place in 2020, with the law that was passed there for, um, to be able to recoup receipts for beyond the first 30 days. The current lodgers tax that is implemented in different places throughout the state is only on the first 30 days of occupancy. After that, it was, so during the peak activity, um, here in Eddie County with, uh, oil and gas industry, there were a lot of temporary residents that were here for extended periods. So this was, um, this, this law was put into place to try and get some revenue from those temporary residents to support services that were being provided for by county and others that weren't necessarily being paid for at the same pace as property owners and things like that, so. I think the provision in the state ordinance was up to 5%, and the, the P and D group had set this second 60 days at 2%.
Correct.
So, um, we had the latitude to do that. So, anyway, that's the primary difference. The existing lodgers tax is already in place. This, the addition, it was, we cleaned up the ordinance and then provided the provisions for the, for time past the first 30 days.
Correct, and, and the funds beyond 30 days can be placed into the general fund to be used at your discretion rather than limited to advertising and promotion for tourism.
So this is basically a tax increase on folks who are in the county over 30 days.
Who are in lodging in excess of 30 days. So it's, no, it's not a tax increase, no, because they're already, they're already-
30 days now, so.
Right, they're not paying, they're not paying property tax. They're paying lodgers tax for 30 days. And then in the next segment of time, that would drop from 5% to 2%, so it's not a tax increase. It's, it's an ex, it's, it extends the opportunity to recover those taxes beyond 30 days.
Is this going to be RV parks in the county, or van camps that are in the county, is?
Any, any lodging that is temporary, and, and the, and the language in the ordinance is pretty clear as to what constitutes that lodging. So it precludes those people who are in residence here, right? And there, there are some measures that the, the, the person or the company that is providing the lodging has to test for, so to speak, those are my words, to confirm that they're not resident. If they're resident, the tax doesn't apply. If they're not resident, then the tax would apply.
How is that determined?
So it's in the ordinance, and it's by the, by the, the, the lesser, the lessy pays it. The lesser determines if they're, so if you're in an apartment and, you know, you got your driver's license and you paying your utility bills and whatnot, then okay, then you're exempt from the tax. If you're here, but you, you know, your permanent residence is elsewhere, then you're subject to the, subject to the lodgers tax.
If I may, I, if you remember, I voted against this to even send support to Santa. I think what my issue is, and I still sort of have it, and it hasn't been resolved within this ordinance so far, is I do think technically this is sort of a tax on oil and gas, right? Because predominantly, that's who's going to be using it, so that's, they're going to, the ones that are going to have to basically pay this. Which I don't necessarily, if we did it the way you just said it, that's exactly what I think I would be looking for. If we set this, I don't want it to go to the general fund to where it can be used at discretion. If we were to earmark this directly to services that are impacted because of the increase, so let's say sheriff's office. But it couldn't be towards a reoccurring expense, because that would make no sense, because this could take a dive tomorrow, as we've seen. So it's got to be something that, that would sure up a department that I think is directly impacted because of the increase. Does that make sense what I'm saying? So whatever that is and however that argument wants, wants to be made, I would be fine with, whether it be sheriff. If Brian could make an argument that they're impacted, if any department out there could say, hey, here's how we're directly impacted, but if just sending it to the general fund, I think is too, to me, leaves it open for, I think this commission would control it very well. I, I feel confident, um, and I'm not saying we're great. I think we are, but we're, you know, whatever, y'all might not like that. But, uh, no, I, I think you have a certain group of commissioners that have one idea, and as we've seen, as commissions change, ideas change greatly. And I would want to make sure that the citizens are protected, because if they were to send that fund into a general, if somebody was going to spend that on a reoccurring, you could set the citizens up to, when that dips, all of a sudden, the citizens of Eddie County are still on the hook for something that they didn't necessarily ask for. Does that make sense what I'm saying?
And, correct me if I'm wrong, Cass, we can, I think we can do that. There's an accompanying resolution in here that, that allows you to put that money where you want it to.
Yeah, I think that would be the only, I mean, I'm, I'm fine with it going to public meetings, but I think when it comes back, if there's not a direct link to where it's going to go, I don't, I don't think I can ever get on board with it, because I, I don't want to set the citizens up for some other commission to say, well, let's put it into, um, obviously, the only thing that would be righteous, right? Well, that would be something that, uh, could really hurt the county, or, or get in the middle of a project and say, this is going to fund this building, then halfway through the build, and that was my argument, because I think what the city was going to use it for, and that's what I did. That's when it really put a red flag up for me. If you're going to put it towards something that you're building, well, halfway through the build, if you lose your revenue, you still got to finish, and that's going to put that burden on, on folks that it shouldn't. So that's my two cents on it.
I think the latitude is there to designate, just like the first 30 days is pretty clear on what it's able to be used for. I think you could put some of those provisions in, uh, into the language for single purchases or single expenditures, non-recurring, that were related to impact from those that were-
You can do that, because it gives you the latitude to determine where you want to spend it, so we could actually put in here.
I agree with, with Commissioner Henry. Too many times, there is tax revenues and tariffs that are used for things other than the purpose that they were intended for, and I think that that's one thing, as a citizen myself, that really burns, uh, is the fact that, that a tax is levied and it is used for something other than what the purpose of the tax was sold to us about.
Weight, weight distance, refer.
Yes.
Yeah.
And, and others too.
Yeah.
You know, I talked to, I, I, I actually went to Santa Fe and talked to the guy that, that actually writes up these bills and stuff that are presented to the legislature, and I always ask him, I said, why isn't there a purpose on those bills? And they said, the legislature doesn't like that, so that it pigeonholes them as to what they can use that money for. That's exactly what should happen.
I, I've got, I do have a few reservations about this. One, I haven't heard any positive feedback from the, from the city, and we have, we would have very small revenue, um, out of this. And obviously, we're having levy taxes for great revenue or small revenue. That's not the, that's not the, the, the point. My point is, is that I, I don't want to turn this into a marijuana deal. 75 million, cost 60 million to implement it. We all make $4 million a year. Big frickin' movie. So the problem is, is the, we turn the RV park owners, because that's really the only extended lodgers tax that we would have in the county are RV parks. We don't have hardly anything else, hotels, maybe White City, that's a hotel, I guess. But I don't, I don't know of any other place besides an RV park that we do it. So what we do essentially is we turn, just to Commissioner Cordova's point, we turn those, um, uh, we, we turn the, the RV park owners, uh, we turn the burden of proof on them. So if we want to come in here and say, okay, show us, show us your books, well, they have to keep enough records to prove that I don't have to pay lodgers tax on this person, this, this person, this person, this person. And I don't think, I mean, I don't think we personally, you're the guy that has to do it, but I don't think we have the personnel to, to, to enforce that. I don't, I think this is something that is unenforceable for us. I, I don't see how we put it in place and, and be able to, um, be able to control it. Am I, am I thinking correctly?
So, uh, there, there's certainly an administrative effort required, and it does, um, it does ask the, the lesser to do some things, but they're already, they're already doing some of them, right? So, um, I think one of the questions you have to ask yourself is, is the county willing to take on the additional cost and burden of, of additional, well, just, if, if you're, if you're not going to do it, then are you, is the county, are the other citizens in the county that do pay property tax, pay other taxes, going to pay for those services that these other temporary, uh, living conditions put on the, on the county services? So if, if, if you're thinking that, okay, well, those folks, you know, they're, they're going to the restaurant or they're going to grocery store, whatever, okay, so they're going to pay the GRT, but those are going to go to the city. They're not necessarily going to go to the county. And if you're okay with the rest of the taxpayers in the county paying for those services that these individuals have access to and use of, then that's, that's, that's your choice. This was, this was done to try and get back some of that cost for services they were, that were available to them that they didn't have to pay for, like the rest of the citizens in the county. So that's the difference.
Emergency service essentially. That, that's because it's only really sheriff and fire.
Well, you could, you could, you could put roads in there as well, right? I mean, they're, you know, when, when we had, uh, when we had 25,000 extra folks running up and down the road, we, and, and out in where they were working, those were the roads that were, were impacted.
Do we have a financial impact review on that?
We haven't. It, it, I mean, it's, it would be, it would be somewhat subjective to say. You'd, you'd have to determine what the, the cost per unit is per population, and then make a determination that, okay, this is the, this is the total population. Here is the, here's what's considered the resident population, and so whatever that number is, 10%, 20%, 25% of that total population.
Do we have anything other than RV parks that this would apply to besides White City Hotel?
Um, no, there's, there's some other, there's some other-
Couple Airbnb?
I mean, we, we, we get enough, we- I mean, we, we, we get enough, we get enough, that we've accumulated about two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars for the thirty-day portion, right? So it's not, it's less than twenty thousand dollars a month on what's currently coming in. But I don't, I'm trying to think if there are any, any workforce camps that are not in the city, that are in county, and I think there's some over on the west side.
We have two or three.
Yeah, but...
Workforce camps.
Workforce, but, but those, in order for them to do that, they have to have tremendous sewer treatment plants and stuff. And so, so what, how you have these is you have access to, to sewer. I mean, workforce, where's a workforce camp that's not an RV park in the county?
We've got one with forty-three units, four bedrooms apiece, out off of Quahada Road. They don't presently have a sewage treatment facility built, they're in the process of developing that, but, uh, right now, they're on holding tanks.
Oh, they're in, they're in holding tanks, so they're pumping?
Yeah. I'm not familiar at this point with the two locations out off of Ferguson, Grandy Road area that we're presently trying to get permitted and in compliance. I, I don't know where, what they're doing.
So we've got one of forty-three units, is kinda what we're thinking?
Yeah.
And then RVs?
Yeah, and they have a hundred-and-fifteen RV spaces.
So this, this request is to set up public meetings. It's not to, it'd be the, it'd be the first step if the commission was going to recommend adopting the ordinance. So this is the first set of public hearings, then it would have to come back, then there'd be another, um, hearing for the ordinance adoption, is that correct?
Come back, once you get through these hearings, and, and if there were changes made, there'd be a recommendation, it's gotta be a recommendation from the commission to say, let's put this on an agenda and, and give notice that we're gonna determine whether or not we're gonna pass this or not. So this is just to preliminarily see what kind of...
Getting input from the public and...
What changes are made, or if you, or the public, maybe they say, we don't want it, period. And then you don't have to go forward from there.
So, but, but you do so understanding that the cost is gonna be borne by those, the current taxpayers.
So it, it seemed to be a real easy financial impact review. We could just go to the city and say, hey, your RV parks, what percentage of the RV park people are long-term or short-term? I mean, because they're reporting that currently, it's already in, it's already in place in the city. If we did that, then we could just say, we got a thousand spots in the county, it's gonna be X number of dollars, and it's gonna be X number of burden and, and revenue. That would be a really simple way to do it.
If that's what you're looking for, we could do that.
Maybe I'm missing something on there, and, and, and maybe a financial impact review.
Looking for, what would the potential revenue be, not necessarily what, what the, what's the potential cost?
Well, and, 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 and I, I mean, I wanna, I guess, know also how much we get on property taxes per RV spot, because RV spots are also taxed, property, so those are paid in property taxes, right? So, I mean, so I mean, they're, they're...
So it's an improvement on the property?
Right. And so that's, so that's paid in there, so anyways, I'm, um, yeah. I just, I'd, I'd like to have a little more information. And obviously, we're just setting dates for, so this is, so everybody's having a really fun time going around with me here.
And I'm...
We appreciate it.
Still don't see how you could sell this as not a tax increase. You, the people that have the, the camps and the RV parks in the county that are gonna have to do the paperwork and collect the fees and, and turn them into the county for collection, we're gonna have awful hard time convincing them that this is not a new tax.
They're already doing it.
The RV parks are collecting, okay.
I think, I think perhaps as part of the, excuse me, the public hearings would be if we could just get an idea of what they're doing, like what their process is, and if it would be, you know, anything additional, or how they feel about this. I think that information is, is important, you know? But I have no problem with, um, setting up dates for public hearings.
I don't think I do either, but I think my part, I think the good discussion we had is, is I would look at that before it came back. If that helps.
So to summarize then, in preparation for public hearings, to get feedback on the current draft ordinance, we also want to have some, um, some, some information about how the process works in terms of determining resident or temporary, the process for reporting and collecting the taxes, and then, uh, a deter, uh, an estimate of what that revenue stream could look like based on what the city is currently experiencing. Because they've, they've had it in place for about six months.
And a definition of where we're gonna spend the money. And where it's allocated, yes.
I can support the hearings. I'm not real sure, I'm very skeptical about supporting the ordinance, so...
Let's get feedback from the public and we'll go for that.
If I can interject for just a moment on, on the determining who and this does and doesn't apply to. We had some discussion in the, in the P and D meetings, and there's an attestation form attached that has to be filled out by the VND. It, it's much like it is presently, it's pretty much an honor system. You know, there, there's really no way for us to say they followed the form, didn't give us false information, uh, just a signature, and then we looked at the city guidelines as to what they require uh, as verification that they're permanent resident, and put that information on the attestation form. So I, I, I don't know, where, where would you guys like us to move beyond that, so that I can take this?
I think that's one of my issues, is, i- is there, do we have recourse to go in and hold the RV park accountable for what they have or have not paid? And I wouldn't, I wouldn't, you know, it's not their fault if somebody lies to them. I mean, they don't, they can't go out and investigate every signature they have. As for mail and things like that, like it would be, it would be difficult. And so I wouldn't want a, a future commission being able to say, hey, you've been delinquent for four years, you haven't reported correctly, and we're gonna come back and levy a tax on you retroactively.
So for most, most of the situations that would apply in the county, there're gonna be RV spaces or potentially workforce camp facilities. It's not gonna be an apartment, it's not gonna be a motel. So if you're here in the county in a fifth wheel in an RV space, not saying that you couldn't be a permanent resident, but it's highly unlikely that you're a permanent resident in Eddie County. You may be in that space temporarily while you're trying to find a more permanent spot, but, you know, fair enough. So face values about what you're gonna get, and, and for most instances, you know, the, the ordinance has a provision of providing for, um, um, hate to call it an audit, but you can, you know, random groups that you could, once a year, okay, we're gonna go out to the Fifth Will Heaven, and we're gonna audit their books for the past year. And here's the number of resident, or here's the number of spaces, here's the occupancy, and here's what's been collected. And that's, you know, I think the intent was that if they've been doing the reporting on the thirty-day deal, are they, are they now contributing for beyond thirty days? Again, so it's, it's, it's not a new process. It may be something that the county puts a little more rigor in than has previously been done because of the number of, um, opportunities. But the, the... For those businesses that operate in the county, it would be far easier to make those determinations than what's the city has to do with all of the other rental properties that potentially fit into this. You all know that there are places that, um, homes that have, that you might normally rent to a family who's looking for a new place, that are now rented to industry that bring people in and out with regularity that... So I don't think that's gonna be the situation in the county. There may be a few outlying residents that fall into that, but still. So again, I think we can, we can answer the, the questions and provide the information for the public discussion. Because the public's gonna have the same questions, um, until they understand what it is. But it's, it's really the county's attempt to balance the, the payment of services for those that are receiving them, and not put it all on the backs of the current taxpayers. So...
I'll say one last thing, I do appreciate, thank y'all for doing two percent instead of pushing it all the way to the top, so...
With that...
Would you all like to set the meeting dates, or would you like us to set those?
You set the meeting dates, we don't...
Thank you? Thank you with a question mark, Catherine?
Yeah, okay.
Another thing, Steve, is who, who do you expect are going to be at these hearings? To, is it the P and D group? Is it members of the, the community services team? Is it members of commission? What's the expectation?
Generally, when we've had these in the past, we'll try to have P and D members there. Usually, it's been myself and Wes, uh, in the past, and fortunately, it's involved other ordinance. So, so I've also had my co-enforcement people there for opinion if anyone asks it. Other than that, my thought was that we possibly try to, to accommodate what you all were talking about, was see what we can do to disseminate the information specifically out to the individuals that'll be involved in this that we have contact information for, so that they could show up, give an opinion if they want to.
But I would suggest we do the, the preparation and lead work. They have community services there, a couple members from P and D there, uh, at those meetings. And then, uh, it, again, it's, it's a, it's a feedback collection process, it's not a, um, pass or no pass situation.
Exactly. And, and to date, from the public, we've had the three public meetings with the P and D moving this thing forward and developing what you guys see today. We've not had any public input. I've not received any emails, we haven't had anybody come into the meetings with any input that, that hasn't already been put in the ordinance.
And I think most people are thinking that it's already passed. I've got several questions on that, because the, the city has passed it.
Right.
I, I got several calls after the city passed, and they said, why'd you guys do this? They said, we didn't even know about it. And I says, well, hang on a second, I said, we hadn't done it.
Right.
But, but they have RV parks in the, in, in the city, and I got, I gotta say, I got several of those calls. But, um, yeah, that's, I think a lot of people are thinking that it's already over with. So we, we, we need to, before we do it, we need to be transparent about, about what we're doing, and advertise that as best as we can.
Absolutely, we'll try to get it out to everybody we can. It's, it's very difficult on the RV parks. I've found that a lot of the information that they've given us as they permit with us is a lot like the phones that people use, they're changed about as often as we change socks. So phone numbers...
For four days.
Yeah, phone numbers, email addresses are, are not good the next year when they come back in to re-permit uh, or, or re-license. So we'll, we'll try our best to get it out to the people we can get it out to, and...
I'm just glad they've already got Stephen's number.
Yeah, 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 great, I'm excited on that too.
So, once you, once you get that set, we'll, we'll let commissioners know when the meetings are, so that they're informed. Send them the same packets that would go out, suddenly the... The, uh, recommendation in a...
Okay, so we entertain a motion that we approve the recommendation to set public meeting dates, giving, um, Steve, well, what's your department? I'm trying to think, yeah, community services, I'm trying to think of a department. Uh, giving community services latitude to set and pick those dates and advertise for the meetings. Motion and a second, please call for the vote.
Cordova?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
McCutcheon?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Stephen, thank you commissioners for the discussion and input, it's very good. Next item is the resolution and agreement consent agenda. Um, there's, there's a lot on that agenda today. I don't know if there's anything that you want to pull or not.
Do any of the commissioners have any items to pull, to discuss, the resolution agreement consent?
I do not.
Beard, you got anything?
No.
Okay. Uh, I will entertain a motion that we approve the resolution and agreement consent agenda as presented, pulling no items. Okay, motion and a second, please call for the vote.
Cordova?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
McCutcheon?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Thank you, commissioners. The next item on the agenda would be department updates. Are there any specific updates from any particular departments?
When it, when the sheriff, uh, it's under Sheriff Griffin's turn, I would expect him to take at least fifteen or twenty minutes. I mean, I'm just, I just want to have that expectation, I mean, if you're gonna represent the sheriff, then I think...
Don't you just wanna break him in easy? Okay, um, I will just say here that, um, it's been a, it's been a busy month with lots of different things going on, so that, uh, it's, it's not that there's nothing specific to report, it's just, there's still a lot of good work, harden having going on, so, um, we appreciate all that's, all that they're doing. As you know, later in the agenda, we're, we're, the departments have worked on wrapping up budgets and different things, so... Lots, lots going on in the county, but we appreciate that. Next item is legislative update.
Honored Mr. Chairman, commissioners, uh, legislature's over, but that doesn't mean everything stops. So we got a lot of things going on at the state level with the legislature committees. Let you know last week, they had a, uh, the taxation and revenue department had a hearing on the new, uh, gross receipts tax rules. Uh, I got to watch a little bit of that because at the same time LFC was going on. But the, uh, the general consensus I can give you about the tax and rev meeting was, is there, it, there was probably thirty or forty people justified during that hearing via Zoom, and none of them were happy. They didn't like it because it's putting, uh, a lot of burden on businesses that do, uh, business outside of the city, across different city lines and things like that, especially the health, healthcare industry. And, uh, they're not happy because they're having to bill at different areas at different rates, uh, uh, an accounting nightmare. That's kinda about all I know about it, and that's all I can tell you about it, but it's, uh, no one on there was happy. So, uh, just leave it at that. The LFC did meet last week on Thursday and Friday, discussed possession budget review. It was noted that about nineteen-point-one billion dollars has been brought into the state in the past year uh, through the coronavirus-associated funding, uh, which means it has been a big shot in the arm to the New Mexico economy from the federal government. Even after all this money has come into our economy, New Mexico ranks forty-eighth based on the business environment, economy growth, and employment levels in the United States. The average household income in New Mexico for two thousand and nineteen was seventy-one thousand dollars, Arizona was eighty-four thousand dollars, and the national average was ninety-one thousand dollars. New Mexico has seen the largest number of people ever in the history of the state living in poverty. LFC numbers predict that New Mexico will see a decline in population over the next ten years. People are leaving New Mexico. in population over the next ten years. People are leaving New Mexico. The budget status is good and there's significant surplus, which is being credited, of course, to the slowing of the government, uh, and what they're doing and also federal stimulus money coming into the state. Much talk centered around the vetoes that the governor had put on the budget bill that came out of, off of her desk, uh, which the LFC felt contradicted some of the legislation in place challenges on how to spend the money that had actually been budgeted. There was a lot of discussion in the committee about that from the LFC. They felt like we got the money here, but the vetoes over here are preventing us from being able to spend it. So, obviously, a lack of communication that we see in that process. I'm just reporting what the committee, what the committee was saying. So, that was, that was kind of where we were, um, as far as the LFC said. The, the budget looked pretty good. Uh, they think, they think that's, that's going well. Uh, they're still struggling a little bit with how to spend the, uh, the coronavirus money that's come in. It's still a little uneasy about that. Some of them are uneasy about being able to spend it because they're afraid if they spend it incorrectly that the state's gonna be on the hook for it. And I appreciate that. I think that's, that's very good. A, a little bit more about that meeting that I saw, it was very interesting to, and, and as you know, and this is kind of getting into the political realm just a moment, but very interesting to see how some of the legislators have changed their opinions since the sixty day session on a lot of things. Um, they were all against some of it back during the session and some of it they were for during the session and now they flip. Of course, we're out of the session. So, anyway, uh, the new, the, back on the new subject, the redistricting process will be starting soon. As you know, Senate Bill three oh four was passed during the session. It forms a citizens group that will actually be going around the state, holding meetings, collecting information about the redistricting process and how that will look. It's going to be challenging, uh, to say the least because of the late numbers coming out on the census and what we've seen, which bases a lot on how this redistricting possibly will look. Um, that special session, which will be held to determine the redistricting lines, uh, right now, we thought it might be held as early as October, November. Now they're saying it will probably run into late December because of a lot of factors. That proves very challenging to the LFC, as I mentioned in the hearing, because that's when the LFC meets, December is their busy month. That's when they meet to decide all the budget issues, uh, legislation that they'll be submitting for the thirty day session, which comes up in January twenty, twenty-two to determine budget. A lot of the same people that are on that committee will also be looking at the special redistricting, special session for redistricting in December. So, there's going to be obviously some challenges there as far as how they're going to schedule all this and make it all work. Um, and so, that's, that's about all I have to say about that. It's going to be a busy end of the year when it comes to all of these issues. Any questions?
I've got a random question. With your seventy-one thousand dollars, you said that's our average income for New Mexico?
Per household.
Per household. If they were to, have they ever done this? I'd be super curious since they want to eliminate oil and gas. If you were to take oil and gases, salaries out and take the federal government salaries out, what do you think New Mexico's average income would be? That's a real question.
But I mean, think that, yes, Commissioner Henry, I think that's a very logical question. Uh, I think that we all pretty much know the answer to that because we do have at least a third of the budget comes from oil and gas.
Yeah.
And I can tell you, and, and not to get, and I promised Al I would keep this short, but if you look at the maps and the whole income, population, and we're, we're losing population, gaining population, income and everything, you know, the bottom part of our world down here is green. It's the northern part of the state that hurts. So, I think answer that question is, is if you take the green out of the equation, I assume, based on what I see, common sense is that the rest of the state would look the same as the northern part of the state does right now. Just, you're answering the answer to your question.
I think that it's really scary for the state of New Mexico.
Very scary.
Because the citizens of New Mexico deserve better. No matter, I don't care who's in, in power, it makes no difference to me. But if you take those two salaries out, our state has never, and we're already obviously low, and, and you take those two out, we don't exist. How are some of these folks gonna live? And it's a real concern for the state. And I think as citizens of New Mexico, not just Eddie County, like you said, we do pretty good down here. But if you love the state of New Mexico, that's a question that should be asked regularly to these folks. How are we gonna help those folks up north become successful? So, that, that was just my one question. And it was a sincere question. I'm not trying to make a point.
Oh, I understand. But I think it's a valid point. And like I said, when you look at the true numbers and you look at the color coded, if you wanna go and look at LFC site, there's color coded maps under the show all this and reflect this. I think if you look at that, it's, it's pretty obvious. It's kind of like our, our Arrowhead report. It's pretty obvious what that means to the state of New Mexico. And then, when you, you know, we know what oil and gas does. And then, when you factor the federal stimulus money is what really got us over the hump of the low oil prices. And, and fortunately, that was a, a short hump in that. But that's what got us over that, was that federal stimulus money as far as the statewide goes. And so, when you start looking down the road, population decreases, everything that's happening, and you really don't see new industry coming in. I know you're seeing a little bit in Albuquerque in the last couple of days, intel. But that's, that's some of the things that, that, you know, that, it's kind of like, you know, your kids sometimes, you just, you tell them something and then you just kind of gotta grab ahold of them and say, are you looking me in the eye? Are you listening to me? You know, this is serious. And so, that's where we are.
I, uh, very interested in the redistricting. I think the election, is it June first for CD one?
Yes.
I think that's gonna pay a, play a big part in redistricting if, uh, and I'm plagiarizing a dare to a certain degree. But if that's a close election or the Republican wins that seat, that's gonna throw shockwaves through the redistricting process. I don't think they're gonna be able to gerrymander Heather out, which is what their plan is. I mean, if they wants to look at it or listen to it, it's obvious what they wanna do. But anyway, I think that may be a bright spot.
Yes, sir. And to build on that a little bit, Commissioner Beard, is the fact that we did hear, and I think I mentioned this in my report to you after the session, we did hear a lot of positive, uh, during the discussion of this Senate Bill three oh four, we did hear a lot of positive, uh, I felt like was positive, both sides of the aisle, input on that, basing, saying that, you know, it needs to be better and do away with the gerrymandering. Unfortunately, we have heard some things from the speaker that contradict that. And so, I think what we're seeing happening here, hopefully in the next divine intervention in the next eight months, that we have extended this redistricting out to the end of the year. I don't like it. I don't think it make, it makes a quick, hurried process. But I think we're gonna get more input in, in how to do this and look at maybe physical boundaries and, you know, population boundaries, things like that, instead of just saying, we're gonna reach out here and pull everybody into our, into our hoop. Uh, the thing we have to remember is, is that the legislature has a final say. This is just recommendation. So.
Yeah, that is.
Maybe, maybe I'm drinking Kool-Aid, but I, I heard a lot of things and I've seen some things being said. There is some movements there that I think maybe give us a little more positive outlook that we can remain whole as we have down here and try to, try to keep our, our voice what little we have. One of the things that is happening today starts early voting on that, on that particular seat. Uh, and it is, uh, I think tonight, I'm not putting an ad out tonight, there is a, uh, there is a debate on TV with that. Uh, and so, it'll be interesting to see how that all comes out. Uh, the other thing that we're seeing is people are already throwing their hat into the ring for the, for the governor's race. Uh, and there's lots of talks and I think you'll hear in the next couple of weeks, we'll see some things coming out there. Uh, it's going to be an interesting time because of all of the things, just like we said here with the LFC and the budget and the economy in New Mexico, we cannot keep going through like we are without making changes. It's just not gonna work. Just add.
Do you think you could send like?
Excuse me?
Do you think you could send a link to us to that LFC information about?
Yes, I can.
I would really be interested in reviewing that.
It is on the, and I'll send that to you, Commissioner Cordova, but it is on the legislative website under committees and you can look at LFC. You can click on all that and it'll pull that up to you. It's a little confusing because they have a lot of things on top line there. So, you have to kind of, and, and I'll send it to you. Know where to go to. But all of their agenda items, unfortunately, what I, what I run into is sometimes on those meetings, they have things on their agenda and they have handouts, but the handouts aren't on the agenda when they're having the meeting. So, you go back after the meeting and they've populated with what you wish you really had at that time and there's no way to get. I've had, our legislators have been really good of giving me some of that information prior to that wasn't available. So, okay?
Thank you.
I'll send that.
The next item is the travel request consent agenda. Uh, we have one prior and two future travel requests.
Do we have any questions or comments on the travel request consent agenda? Having none, I'll entertain a motion that we approve the travel request consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion and a second, please call for the vote.
Cordova?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
McCutcheon?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Thank you, commissioners. Um, we don't have any emergency business, to my knowledge. Anything, county attorney? Thank you.
Hope not.
Yeah, me too. Um, legislators, I don't see legislators here. We try and get them in upfront if, if they're able to join us. But elected officials, any comments from elected officials?
I will say, we are meeting with Michael Sharp on Thursday to go over, we don't have our numbers. He's from research and polling and that's who we've always dealt with regarding redistricting. Um, we've got to add some precincts, obviously, the population and the, the growth in the county with all the new residents. So, we will be addressing that preliminary, obviously, until we get the true numbers. But, um, just wanted to know we'll be doing that.
Are we looking at maybe needing to move some lines for districts?
Yes, sir. There will be some boundary adjustments and some additions, uh, splitting of precincts. Uh, so we'll be adding, I can't remember what we had talked about. I, I, I wanna say about ten to fifteen new precincts. Uh, we currently have forty-one.
So, there are specific guidelines that the clerks have to follow in this, um, professional services that we've, the county has used for several years, is familiar with, and Ms. Darlene's waiting on census data. We have the census numbers for the state, but we don't, they're not broken down yet by county. So, that's, they're thinking, any day now, any day now, any day now, and it might be, might be August.
So, when they come back with these changes, do we vote on that?
You will be voting yes, sir, on that and then you'll need to redo your commission districts possibly. I mean, that's not a possible, you will be redoing your commission districts because we'll have new precincts. So, either, you know, that, and of course, equitable in numbers, um, and all the other things that go with those numbers.
So, it's highly likely that, uh, all of the bad road stuff would wind up in Commission District One. Is that what you're thinking about?
I don't see a reason to change it, he says.
No, no. He, he feels those questions so well. But it's, it's, it's driven by the, the populations and, and those are represented in the votes, the, the polling that's occurred.
I'm good with that. Just send me the money.
The four dollars and seventy-seven cents is on there, on its way to you.
Per clip?
No, no. All in. But it is, it is a process. We, um, I had the opportunity to talk with the clerk a couple of times about this and then the directions from the Secretary of State arrived late last week with a whole book of thou shalt and thou shalt not.
Timelines, yes.
Yeah. So, there's, there's an arduous amount of work that county clerk, um, must do in preparation for the eventual state districting efforts. So, we'll, we'll get some glimpses along the way. Um, and then, as.
You'll have public hearings once you get your districts, you know, just to get some input from the public to see if they don't wanna be in your district or yours or, so. It's a process.
Yeah, more, more to comment.
Every ten years, it makes it that much more exciting.
It'll, it'll be a busy fall.
It's gonna be a busy fall.
For, for that purpose, yeah.
Plus an election in November.
Yeah. Thank you, Ms. Darlene. Any other elected officials? I don't hear, I don't hear the sheriff, so we must be good. Thank, we appreciate you being here, Sheriff Griffin. Um, county managers' comments, um, couple of items. I did wanna touch briefly on the, I'm glad Ms. Darlene talked about the redistricting because the letter from the Secretary of State, uh, was, is like, holy crap. There's a ton of stuff in here. Um, the other item is, last week, the governor came out, they changed the color map, stated many colors. Um, they added a new, they adjusted the criteria for positivity and incidents per hundred thousand upward a little bit that allowed, you know, Eddie County is turquoise in the current, in the current format. They also added a third criteria that could be used, um, and that's vaccinations, vaccination, number of vaccine, percent of the population vaccinated. And that bar's gonna change every couple of weeks. Start at thirty-five percent tomorrow and then go to forty in two weeks and forty-five the week thereafter. Um, we, we continue to have an issue with data. Um, and when livelihoods in the county are dependent on that data, it's, it's very, very concerning and very consternating that the data's not complete. Um, we did some quick checking and I've asked, can we, can we get a compiled number for the NIMSS data? Commissioner Cordova can tell you what NIMSS is because I'm not sure I can fully articulate the acronym, but it's, any vaccine, any, any vaccine given has to be registered in the NIMSS database. And that's, that's the official record. Every provider has to do that registration, but only a provider can see what they've done. They're, we're, we've been trying to find a place we could get a total number for the county and because we're not a provider and, and we could only see what we get. So, we're trying to compile that data, but right now, we do know that Artisia General has given well over twelve thousand vaccinations. And we, we believe they, they've been only doing the Pfizer. So, if two vaccinations, fully vaccinated for Pfizer, so you divide that number in half, they've, they've done, you know, well over six thousand full doses. Um, and yet, the, the, uh, portal, the NMDOH portal that you can go to look at shows that, uh, we only have twelve thousand fully vaccinated. And, and we know that's not right because of the number of, the other number of providers that have been given it, plus what our local Department of Health has done in conjunction with the city and the county. So, again, when that number's noticeably low, but yet the state's hanging your hat on that number, it, it becomes a bit frustrating. So, our overall incident rates and positivity rates have continued to decline. Uh, we saw a couple of little bumps, but again, I think it's more of a data flow issue than it is, uh, we've talked to AGH, we talked to CMC about what are they seeing? And, uh, we think the vaccinations that have been going on and the, the other activities, um, I think we're in a good position. I think we'll continue to stay turquoise. If we, if our numbers align tomorrow, we should be turquoise for another month. Um, I don't think we're gonna exceed the positivity or the number of incidents. I think we should be okay. We're not, according to the state's data, we're not gonna be close on the vaccination numbers. So, um. Let's see, the other thing, the oil and gas activity production seems to be holding flat. There's just enough effort to keep it flat. The number, the amount of investment from the things that I can garner from different sources suggests investments will be low this year relative to previous years, which is no big surprise. If you use the rig count as the barometer, we've been flat for the last three weeks. Up one, down one, no change for the last three or four weeks. Rig's in, in New Mexico is holding at about seventy. So, sort of split, Leonetti County. Prices are firm, surprisingly firm. I think tomorrow, the number that I use for the monthly averages will be posted by the Energy Institute. And I expect it to be low sixties again for, that'll be the second month. So our outlook for revenue for the coming fiscal year seems reasonable for our budget estimate. And we'll talk about that towards the end of the meeting. Just know there've been a lot of other things going on behind the scenes in different departments, different activities. And we're, each department's doing a good job in keeping things moving in the right direction. When those, when those activities become challenges, we'll reach out to the commission and make you aware of what those, if those situations warrant. But understand that things are going reasonably well in a chaotic environment. So I certainly appreciate all of the work that the directors and their departments are doing at this point. Eddie County's open for business and we're trying to encourage more business to be in Eddie County, so.
I have one question for you.
Yes, sir.
You were saying that the rig count is kinda going down in our area. What's happening just across the border in Texas?
Um, the Permian rig count in total had been increasing until last Friday. There was a drop of four, but in the, in the previous, in the previous six months, it went from a low of about one twenty-five up to about two twenty-five, two thirty. This last week, it flattened off, they dropped four off, and I think that's maybe just a term finished or whatever. I don't think it's, I don't think it's an economic indicator or that they've, a particular company may have expended their capital investment for the year or whatever. But I think that'll, it'll grow slowly and steadily, but, yeah.
So most of the growth is in the, across the Texas state line?
Absolutely, absolutely. The low in New Mexico, we were down to probably thirty, thirty-two was our low. And in that same timeframe, we've only increased to seventy. Our peak rate, we were about a hundred and forty, a hundred and thirty. So we've not, we've not clawed back near what we lost. Now, having said that, the Permian, you know, the peak was four hundred, so they're about half of where they were.
But it's not in the right direction.
The rate of increase is greater in the overall Permian, the Texas side, than it has been in New Mexico. And the Delaware portion, they're the greatest assets in the basin. But they also carry the greatest uncertainty in terms of policy that is out there right now, so. That's, I believe, the reason for the shift in investment. My opinion.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Any other questions? If not, will County Commission comments?
Um, just wanna say thank you to all the departments for all the hard work you're doing. I have come to realize how intricate budget planning and work is, so thank you for all the work you're doing behind the scenes. I've been reporting on the Life House project for a couple of months now, and they opened up last Tuesday. So the rehab portion has been open for a week. I've been doing some work for them. And it's gonna be a good program for Carlsbad. They have a lot of work, you know, to do, a lot of, a lot of organization and this and that, but they're expanding services to house up to twenty-five residents at a time for a twenty-eight day rehabilitation program. And then the other part of that program, which is termed Avalon, will be a rehab facility for women and up to two children under the age of four years old, a twenty-eight day rehab program. I can tell you, it is busy. The day that people are discharged, there are people waiting to get in. And to Jerry's point of poverty in New Mexico, it goes hand in hand. Poverty and substance abuse and depression and everything, and we struggle so badly in Carlsbad trying to provide services and care, and it's a multifaceted problem that has many working parts. And so I would just encourage people to come by and take a look at the facility. It's in the old Lansing Health Service Center. And if you have any conversations with individuals, this is just something that we have to keep afloat in our area. And people are struggling all around. So with that being said, it, the positive that comes through this is sobriety and getting people trained in basic life skills to have a productive life. And that can be as simple as learning how to balance a checkbook for some. So I'll be reporting on that as things come up, but as I said, you know, they've been open for a week. The Avalon program is set to open sometime this month. And hopefully, we can really impact a lot of people favorably in our community through this work, so.
All right, I'll keep mine real short. Make sure someone's taking a note. Our governor is very smart. It's a true statement. I think what she does is very intelligent, how she manipulates the system on this Corona. You know, to get the tests, that was, you know, you had to test in order to meet a criteria so that you could, you could go back to your livelihood, right? To get your county open, you had to go test, whether you're sick or not, test, test, test. So she got the test she needed. Very, very smart move. I'm dead serious on that. And now, once again, to your point, and that's what I wanted to make today, very intelligent on how she's gonna push these vaccines, because now she's tied it to your livelihood once again. If you want your county to be open and to stay in a certain color, you have to have a certain amount of vaccines, whether you agree with it or not. Very disappointed that that's how we're gonna do it, because whether you're a vaccinated, or, what would that word mean? Vaccinate? Whether you wanna take the vaccine or not, I'll use my terms, 'cause I'm not smart enough for other ones. So if you're, if you want it or you don't want it, you shouldn't have to be forced to get it, you really shouldn't. And that's always been an issue for me. If you want the vaccine, man, go get it. I'm so happy, honest to goodness, my parents got it, I'm so excited they got it, because now I can be around them and feel much more comfortable around them. But for folks that don't want it, they shouldn't have to be forced to get it to be able to open up their businesses. That shouldn't be a tie-in. I'd be curious if we're one of the only states that has made that tie. Obviously, a lot of the states around us have never made that tie, and they're incredibly successful. And actually, we just heard, they actually are doing much better with their economy. So very, very sad to see that go. I was hoping to hear today that maybe that decision had been changed with shortening the hours. I'm not sure where that went, on the vaccine, on the little clinics.
So, yeah, the clinic, we did another one yesterday that NMDOH staffed and operated. It was, it was full day, nine to four. And they, we know they had a hundred-plus appointments. We think they may have been able to do a couple hundred doses. Previous week, we had like ten appointments and did two hundred and nineteen doses, so.
So I think we're still hopefully seeing, seeing that activity, right? So hopefully, we're gonna see that reversal since we've now tied this in.
To your other point earlier about the, we're trying to organize a mobile unit to find out residents that aren't able to come that do want it, so that we have a list. And then maybe once a week, we have, there's a group that Jennifer's organizing or working with to organize that would be able to do that once a week for a month or something. So we're trying to work with the senior centers to find out who those individuals are, where they're located, and how we can organize getting them scheduled, so.
And to your point, and I think it's an important point earlier, it scares me that once again, we've tied numbers to something we have no control over, no idea. We all know, despite how I've been bashed in one of the local newspapers, you can figure out which one it is, that I was wrong, that they're going to Texas to vaccinate and all that. We know they did. We know folks have done that. Which is great, fine, go get the vaccine wherever you want, but if that's not gonna be counted towards our numbers, well now what do we do? So, you know, I'm really, I was really discouraged to see that now become a criteria when, we know the folks that wanted it, they went and got it, more power to them. We're still having great success of people getting it. If you want it, go get it, please. I mean, it's a great thing. The economy's opening, we're able to get back to our life. If you don't want it, I got no issue with that. You know, it, that's what happened in seventeen seventy-six, right? I mean, that was a pretty sweet document, and that should be a very important document to this day. We should have the freedom to make those choices for ourselves and everything else, so. But all credit to her, she is very smart on how to get things done. So you gotta give that to her, and she, and that's on all sincerity, I'm not joking. She is able to get what she wants to accomplish by tying it to things that make it very difficult. So, the other note, two quick things. Really sad to see Carlsbad, they were supposed to play a game. I guess there was a Corona test or something, so they have been eliminated from the state tournament. That's a real bummer. I have another, that's just, once again, kids are having to deal with stuff they shouldn't have to deal with. So on a good note, I'm not rubbing it in, but Artesia does play today at two for their first round of the state tournament, which I think Carlsbad should've played today, right? Is that, should've been the first round in Roswell, I believe.
That's right.
So I hate to see it for those kids, and I think the girls, I think y'all ran into the same problem, if I'm not mistaken, if I heard the radio right. So really sad to see kids have to finish their season the way some folks did. But we do have a few still going in Eddie County, so root on the Bulldogs today at two o'clock in Artesia. They're playing Silver, so hopefully, hopefully they can keep going, and they had a pretty good year, so. Thank y'all very much.
Uh, you know, we continue to see in the newspaper and stuff, attacks on the oil and gas industry. I read in the Carlsbad Current Artist just before I come to the meeting today where the royalty revenue for the state of New Mexico, its portion of it, was a hundred and nine million dollars. And if you take that and multiply it times twelve and divide it by what their usual percentage is, twelve and a half percent, that's over, it's almost eleven and a half billion dollars. That oil and gas revenue going into our economy in a year's time, just from the royalties. That doesn't include the production taxes and the grocery receipts tax. And so, you know, again, I say, have you diversified from that? That's my thought.
Mr. Beard?
I would like to thank Commissioner Cordova for what you've done with Life House and Avalon and taking that ball and running with it. I've had some calls on it, and I really haven't done my due diligence on it. So I would really like to thank you for picking that ball up and running with it. That's about all I'm about to say. Thank you.
I just have kind of one item, I guess, and that is the school days. If you've got kids in school, you've probably got a text about extending school either zero days, or ten days, or twenty-five days. And again, to the intelligence of the governor, she's tied that all to funding. I'd be a little skeptical about the funding actually being there for those days that are extended. I find it a little, a little odd to think that we can fix being forty-ninth in school by adding ten or twenty-five days to the next year's calendar. I think it's a pretty slippery slope. We know what the governor's already said, she wants year-round school. Some of you may be opposed to that, some of you may be in for that. I personally am opposed to year-round school just due to the fact that, at least, summer jobs are very important for kids. And so if you can go out and get a summer job and exalt or load hay or haul ice for Fred Beard when you're sixteen for three or four years, every day of the summer. Fourteen, I was fourteen. I was fourteen. I saved up enough, I saved up enough money that summer to buy a pickup, paid cash for the truck, fifty-two hundred and fifty dollars was my truck. And got it all bagged in ice with Fred as we drove around, listened to Ressel and Ball, so it was pretty good. But I just think it's a real slippery slope to start adding those days. I understand that the, that the school board, that there's a lot of things to consider, and I'll trust them to make a good decision on that, but I really do not support adding any days at all, so. But again, they're the ones with all of the information, and I'm sure there's information that I'm lacking there. But it is important for kids to get out and have a summer job, to get out and have one after school, because they've got to develop, they've got to, they've got to develop cursory interest in many different things, and it's really, really good for them. So that's what I support, and I guess, I guess that's about all.
Thank you, Commissioners, I appreciate your comments. We do have an item for executive session this morning. Do you want to take a quick break, or do you wanna push through?
We could probably take a quick break, if that's okay, you wanna?
We can go into session and take the break, can't we?
Yeah, you can do that.
Let's do that.
So I'll entertain a motion that we go into executive session. The board may go into executive session, and according to the state in New Mexico, open the meetings at Section ten fifteen one H two. It's authorized the board to go to County, it's authorized the board of County Commissioners to go into executive session to discuss limited personnel matters.
I'm gonna make that motion.
Motion, second.
Well, we gotta figure out how long?
Reopening in...
How long is this gonna take?
Twenty, fifteen, ten?
Twenty.
Twenty minutes?
Give it twenty.
Okay, we're gonna, we're gonna come back at ten?
Seventeen.
Who's second?
Fred and Ernie. Commissioner Beard?
Okay, Carrie got it.
We'll be back at ten twenty.
Ten twenty.
Vote, gotta vote, gotta vote.
Cordova?
Gotta give you some extra exercise.
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Carlson?
Got it.